Counselor Bigger and Counselor Luck, we are having technical difficulties. And anybody watching on YouTube right now can actually hear me. But we can't get the audio or we can't get the video to work. So if you wanted to follow along on YouTube, you can do that, but it's a little bit behind. So it might be confusing, but at least it would give you the visual picture. But it's probably thirty to forty seconds behind real time, I think.
Check your chat, Carrie. Did not come through. I just asked how you're doing down there.
No, it didn't come through. All I got was, let me see. Yeah, direct chat messages will be directed after the meeting. Or deleted. No, all I got was. @quizpamcis.ca. Oh, now I see your thing. It's been busy.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. And welcome everybody to the February twentieth. Regular meeting of the Quizpamcis Town Council. At this time, first item on the agenda is election of the presiding officers. Counselor Thompson.
Pursuant to section eleven A of the procedural bylaw number thirty-three. In the absence of the mayor and deputy mayor, I hereby nominate Counselor Emma Olson to be elected as presiding officer for the February twentieth twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting.
Counselor, Counselor Miller? Seconded. Thank you. Not seeing any hands. Please vote now. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Counselor Thompson.
And just on a side note, that Counselor Olson will be addressed as. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Bigger, do you have a question? Okay. Thank you. Okay, not seeing any more requests. Please vote now. Counselor Luck.
Six zero.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. It's approved unanimously, six zero. Next item is approval of the agenda. Counselor Donovan. Seconded by Counselor Miller. Not seeing any further hands. Please vote now. Yep, me too. Everybody else? Carrie unanimously, six zero. Next item is the treaty acknowledgement, moment of reflection. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Quizpamcis exists on the traditional territory that Williswick, Malacite, and Mickmac people, whose ancestors along with the Pasamaquoddy tribes, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British crowns in the seventeen hundreds. We would also like to take a moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias and always in the best interest of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. I have a few comments from the chair. You may have noticed over the past few weeks that the town of Quizpamcis has been asking for your input as it looks at its municipal plan, zoning bylaw, and housing needs. The town and its partners on the project held several open houses last week, and we are very pleased with the feedback we have received so far. If you have not had a chance to have your say, there is still time. Visit the website, quizpamcisplanreview.ca for more information and fill out the surveys at the bottom of the page. These are very important conversations as we examine the kind of Quizpamcis you want to see in the future. Fundy Winterfest has been a great event all around our region, and there are still several events to enjoy over the next three weeks. Be sure to visit the Trail of Hearts at the Quplex as the lights are staying on until Thursday. We also have the Leap Year Family Skate on February twenty-ninth at the Arts and Cultural Park Outdoor Rink. For more event details, search for Fundy Winterfest on Facebook. International Women's Day is on Friday, March eighth. This year, celebration in the Canavacassas Valley begins at ten AM at the Quplex, featuring the president and CEO of New Brunswick Community College, Mary Butler, as guest speaker. You must register if you are interested in attending. The registration form and more information can be found on Facebook by searching for. Canavacassas Valley celebrates International Women's Day twenty-twenty-four. This is our last council meeting before March break, which falls during the week of March fourth. I want to wish everyone a safe and enjoyable March break, whatever your plans may be. I would like to call on, call on council to disclose any conflicts of interest. Not seeing anyone, anything. Thank you. Presentations. Presentation of Quizpamcis Development and Building Permit Online Application Portal. Dwight Colburn, Manager of Planning and Development Services and Development Officer for the Town of Quizpamcis. Thank you, Mr. Colburn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, counselors, those that are in the chambers and those that have joined us online. Thank you for an opportunity to present to you the online development and building permit portal application, an initiative that started probably eleven months ago, maybe two years ago, as we started the sort of the back end, sort of internal workings on this before we moved to a public facing portal for the purpose of being able to submit applications for developments and permits and building permits. So I want to take you through a brief presentation tonight to, I think it would be prudent to bring council up to speed on what's coming in the very near future. Just in the event that council obviously hears it on the street or they were, get questions about it, they would have at least knowledge of what's happening. So this process is obviously initiative, planning and building inspection along with our IT department. It was definitely a collaborative effort and a team effort to look at our existing application process, to look at how we could streamline it in the interests of efficiency and make things just a little more smoother, but also look at being able to provide better support through the application process as well as educating the public or people who make the applications. So basically going to look at five points. What is happening? Why are we changing now? How is service being provided? Who benefits from this? And when will it happen? So technology is changing. The way we do business and it's constant. We are adapting and adopting these technologies to deliver service in a timely and efficient way for our growing community. So prior to twenty-twenty-three, the majority of our applications were paper-based. These were hard copy applications that we would get dropped off at the front counter or they would be emailed through attachments. They would come in to the planning department. And if they didn't come in electronically, then obviously they would go into our mail slots or they would deliver to our offices to review. In twenty-twenty-three, we started the process, sort of the first step, if you will, in this multi-step process of moving to a fully online digital process by providing with digital PDF forms. So while we still kept and accepted hard copies, we were encouraging developers, builders, and the residents to download fillable PDFs from our website, which they would fill in and they would submit them electronically. Still, at that point, if we received hard copy applications, we would accept them, of course. And we would take that information and we would enter it into our system. During the initial stages of this development, what was happening in the backend is digital PDFs or hard copy applications that were submitted were entered into our system. In the backend or inside, we built a compliance review process. So a lot of the information that came in digitally through digital PDF was scanned into the system or loaded into the system, which allowed us to verify the information that was on the application with the requirements of the bylaws. That process would flag discrepancies and it would make notification to the applicants of the need for variances or additional information. So that was sort of the first step, if you will, to move more, moving towards a digital platform. Moving from there during twenty-twenty-three and into twenty-twenty-four, we looked at moving that to a frontend or a public facing portal. Where now that information that would be, would be provided through a hard copy application or fillable PDF would now be entered directly online through a public facing portal. And that information would be submitted electronically into the system, which we would get notifications of an application being submitted. And at the same time, we would get compliance review. We would have a first look at it and then would go through a compliance review process and identify where there's more information required. Where's that leading us? As council would be aware, in the twenty-twenty-four budget, they approved a digital service roadmap, which is going to look at basically a digital town hall, if you will. Recognizing that technology as stated is changing the way we do business. This was sort of our first step in towards that digital roadmap. From a planning and building perspective, we did not have a process laid out of how things flowed, what the inefficiencies were, and how we could approve them. So this was sort of a part of that process of aligning ourselves with the roadmap that's to come, getting us prepared for that process. So why are we changing now? First of all, legislative changes from the province through the changes through the Community Planning Act and Building Code Administration Act required us to look at how we issued permits. Basically, anything that was not building code related, you could no longer issue a building permit. It had to be a development permit. So this was a step that we could look at making that process a little more efficient. Obviously, we were, we were looking at introducing a new permit process. So a new permit, so we looked at introducing a new permit process. There was also increasing efficiency in application submission and compliance reviews. In the same private, it allows us to improve access to application assistance. So what this allows, what this process allows us to do is obviously when an application is being submitted now digitally, there are, what's required as minimum requirements for an application are highlighted. So the applicant knows that I have to fill in this information. So what that means is that we're not getting applications that are not deemed complete. A lot of times we were getting hard copy applications that were missing critical information or supporting documents were not being provided, which means from a staffing perspective, we were sort of managing their projects. We were reaching out to them for additional information. In a lot of cases, applications would come in. And because they were submitted, the applicant was led to believe that, oh, in another day or so, I'll get a permit. So, and then when you followed up, it was like, well, I submitted my application. Well, the application was submitted, but it wasn't complete. You're missing critical information that we need. So this allows us to, obviously, when the applications come in, they're more complete, if you will. In some cases, all the information is there and it allows for that review process to be more efficient in a timely manner, which means in the end, the permits will be issued more streamlined as well as more quickly. It also provides with the ability to assist an applicant. A lot of times, if you have a hard copy application, yes, somebody can phone or somebody can email you with questions. So then we're back and forth on the phone and those types of things. What this application allows you to do is actually, actually save a copy of your application, call someone in the planning or building inspection department. We can go into the system, find your application, and help guide you through the process. So you're not sort of on the phone and we're not seeing the application or where you are. We're helping you take you through that process. Also, it, as I said, is an opportunity to educate. A lot of times, there are external agencies that have a stake, there's, you know, there are stakeholders in this process. So maybe you need approvals from Department of Environment. Maybe you need approvals from Department of Public Safety to get a septic permit. Also, there may be instances where there may be information that you're not aware of in terms of what's your property. Maybe there's a water line or a water course that you're not aware of. So this application process would lead you through that, that education process as well. It also, if there's additional information that's required, let's say you're putting up a fence and you need to share it with your neighbor. You're sharing it with your neighbor. It tells you that you obviously need to speak with your neighbor and you might want to get a letter of consent. And that can come in with your application rather than submitting the application and then Ross requesting that information moving forward. So it also allowed us to gather function requirements. As I mentioned, we're moving towards a digital roadmap. So a digital town hall, if you will. It allows us to gather what are the functional requirements that we want to see in the end that benefits and achieves the goals and objectives of what we're trying to do in terms of permitting process, but also what are the minimum requirements that we would look at from a user-friendly type of environment for the applicants. Finally, it sort of, it meets with strategic plans. So it meets with the pillars for economic development, commitment to the community, and capacity building. So in terms of economic development, if we're proactive and we're getting ahead and we're providing this digital portal for developers and builders, they can go through this application and know what's required to submit to get a permit. So that's, that's key. So how do we sort of build or get to this point? So it started with staff input. As I mentioned, about eleven months ago, two years ago, we started this process sort of internally, looking at how we could streamline the actual compliance review or the review of applications that were submitted. So then we looked at what applications do we have internally that would allow us to do that? So rather than going out and purchasing additional pieces of software or, and then getting in terms of learning that and building it forward, we utilize an existing platform that we have. So Laserfish is our record management software that we have. It provides the ability to do workflows. So with the expertise of our IT group, they, they looked at it and then said, okay, we can probably do this in, in Laserfish through the workflow environment. And that's what brought us to where we are today. So we got into an actual frontend or a public facing forum development. That was part of this process, which we're going to look at shortly. But we, once that was built, we did basically high level testing through planning and building inspection. One of the challenges with that is when you build something, you know how it's supposed to work. So you're not seeing it for the first time and there's terminology and there's processes that are every day to us, but to the, to the applicant or to the public who's not in this environment every day, we wanted to make sure that it was user-friendly and easy to understand. So we reached out and we did beta testing. So we did it, we reached out to some of the developers, builders, and as well as, you know, that got passed on to just members of the public who seen it for the first time. So we gave them test scenarios. They went through that process, submitted applications, and provided us with feedback through an online survey. Through that survey, we did some refining of it and addressed some of the concerns or issues that were raised, which brings us to where we are in terms of getting prepared to launch the portal. So how the permit process will basically work, we're looking at six steps, if you will, and then a seventh is sort of taking that information and retrieving and storing it and archiving it. So the online application portal is where the information is collected for your application. It gets submitted into the planning and building inspection and then planning and development services. It goes through a compliance, compliance, compliance review process. If there are, if there's variances required, then obviously there will be notifications in terms of having to apply for, through PAC, which is something that's going to be automated through this process as well. Then it comes to the development officer to make sure everything's in line with the, with the legislative requirements in terms of Community Planning Act, Municipal Plan, Zoning Bylaws. If at that point, we're issuing a development permit, you simply go straight to the payment process. You pay for your permit, permit's issued. If it's a building code-related application for a home or, you know, anything that falls under the building code, then it goes to building inspection for their review of the process. Once you meet all their compliance, you get notification that your permit is ready pending payment. You make the payment, which goes to accounting. And then once that's complete, then we get notification and the permit is issued to the applicant. All that information then is put together in an archival package, which means it can be used for reporting to people like StatScan, service to Brunswick. But also all that information in terms of the application supporting documentation is put together in one bundle, which means if we get a request for information through, through Artipa, we're not going and looking through hard copies, emails, telephone minutes, conversations or whatever we had. We simply go into Laserfish. There's that application package. Here you go. So it's actually taking all that information and putting it together in a bundle which streamlines not only the application process, but anything related to that, that application moving forward. So who benefits from this? Obviously, the applicants. They have a, you know, a way of submitting an application. It's from the point of submission. It's relatively deemed either complete or the amount of information, additional information that's required, you're, you're aware of it through the process, which hopefully speeds up. And that's our goal, to speed up the application process, the review process, and get the permits turned around quickly. In terms of staff, it's obviously our wellbeing. We have many things on our plate and having to manage, you know, projects that aren't, actually are not ours. It takes some of that stress a little off and allows us to put our focus and resources to some of the things that we should be doing on a day-to-day basis rather than, you know, managing these projects, if you will. So cross-demental, cross-departmental collaboration. So now we're, some of these notifications go to engineering. They go to utility. They go to finance. They go external. So you're into the Department of Environment, those sorts of things. So there's more collaboration across departments. You're not operating in silos. And we're obviously capacity building. We're looking at our future, our operations, how we move things forward in the future digitally. Town readiness, we're readiness for growth. So one of the key elements that's now being linked to any sort of funding and those types of things in terms of housing and housing development is are you reducing red tape? Are you increasing, are you reducing the amount of time it takes to get a permit? So this is something that's happening, not just in terms of our jurisdiction, but across the country. They're looking at how can we turn permits around quickly. So that's a part of this step. It's getting ready for growth and also allowing us to have these things in place so we can leverage funding and those types of things appropriately. And obviously strengthening relationships. So the relationships in terms with the community, in terms with builders. We now have a common platform where we communicate from. They're aware of what's required when they submit applications. So they're, as they are critical stakeholders in this process, and we're being transparent as well. And they're, they're being educated through this process. Terms of launch details, we're aiming to launch this, make it live early in March. So as we go through that process, we'll be doing obviously some very much a public campaign. So public information system, information sessions, both in person and virtual. We will be doing videos. These videos will help guide people through the process. These will be readily available throughout your application process. So they will be on our site so that if somebody gets to an application, point in their application, they have access to a video that will help them through this process. So the question may be, what about if somebody doesn't have access to a digital platform? So we'll be setting up a computer kiosk here at the town hall. They can come to the town hall. They can meet with one of the planning or building inspection staff. We will help them through that process. So they, if they don't have the access, it's going to be available here. They can also make an appointment with one of the staff that will help them through this process as well. In terms of what if? In terms of what if there's, you know, there, there isn't an uptake in it? And there's some people who aren't computer savvy or they'd rather just complete an application. Obviously, we'll be looking at those on a case-by-case basis, but if, you know, paper-based, if it's, if it's needed, then we will obviously provide it. Take that information with the understanding that your turnaround time will be a little longer because now we're taking that information entering into a computer-based system. So again, one-on-one support is key. As I mentioned, you can start an application, you can save it, contact town hall, Planning and Development Services. And we will go into the system, identify your application and take you through that process as well. So we recognize there's a period of change, change management. So obviously, we're going to be working with the stakeholders. So that this process becomes as efficient as possible to their, to benefit of both town hall in terms of staff. But also to the community in terms of development and growth. So very quickly, I'll just hunt into a sort of a demonstration. I'm not going to go through all of it, sort of to give you a, a look at what it looks like. So on our website, there will be an application, link to the application portal. The first page is an introduction, basically tells you, you know, important things to know about your application, things, the information that you would need. To go through this process as well as an information checklist. We also guide you through how to complete the application. In terms of the application, there will be anything that's mandatory, required. It's marked by a red asterisk, anything where there's information that's still required prior to submitting, it's obviously identified in an exclamation mark. So we're clearly indicating information, that's minimal information that's required. We also provide things like tool tips. So by some of the fields, you can actually just hover over a question mark and it'll tell you what that information is about and what we're actually looking for. We provide links to other external agencies, so things like G O N B. So for, in terms of looking at wetlands and those types of things or getting more information, we provide links through the application process to be able to connect with external agencies. So once you move into the actual application, it takes you to, to obviously this step, which is, which is your. It's not being shown. We're not seeing that. No, just bear with me. It's a demonstration, it's when we get the issues. It's not coming up. Was it showing? Alright, so, back to it. So when you go into, into your application, it's going to give you basically your applicant details. These are checkboxes. So it asks you if you're the property owner or the applicant. If you were to say yes, then the applicant and the property owner information is going to be same. If you were to say no, you're going to see dropdowns. So these are, these lead you to what we call subfields. If there's a contractor, subcontractor, yes or no, if there's yes, then further down, then that information is going to be identified as well. If it's no, then it's irrelevant, you don't have to worry about it, you move on through the application. Under project details, this is where we gather things about where it actually is, what street and those types of things. So you'd fill that information in. If you don't know some of the information, we actually provide you with a link to our GIS application, where, which gives you the ability to gather the information. So if you select a parcel, then it's going to give you that information. You can actually type in the information. And it's going to take you to the address, twelve Landing Court. We have imagery from two thousand twenty-two, back imagery. We also provide you with information with respect to wetlands and those types of things. This is from the province. And you can query that information. It also has a, the ability to measure. So if you're measuring things, you simply pick the map, go across, that information, you can help assist you to move in and filling the application. So also in the interface, let's say I'm building a fence and a deck and I don't want to submit separate applications. So you can pick as many types of projects with the one application. So if I'm building a deck, and a fence, and a detached garage. Then these tabs are at the top. So you're filling in this application portal through the process once, but you can be doing multiple projects. So you're basically going to each of these projects and filling in the required fields. You upload a site plan or you can download this and mark it up in terms of identifying where the construction is happening. And then you can upload the information through here as well. So if you're building a house and you have building plans and you have site plans, you can simply upload them through the portal and it becomes part of your application package. At any point through your application, if you need to stop your application and save it to go get information, you can simply do a save as draft. You will get an email with a link that you can then use that link to get back into your application. Or if you need to talk to town staff, you can save it as a draft. We'll get a notification of what that link is or the ID, which allows us to get access to the application into our system. Basically, fill in the, the information, you submit the application, you get notification that it's submitted and we get a copy of that application. And you move through the process. In the interest of time, we're not going to go through each, but it's to give, give council an idea of what it looks like, how it works. And where are we, where we're going with this. Any questions?
Any questions? Counselor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr., thank you Dwight. I got, I got to use this, I guess, when I did my fence permit because it looks pretty, pretty familiar when I did this. Except I had to email it in, I think, after I was done. Just a couple of quick questions, I think this is excellent. And you did say that we could, people may do paper because we do a lot, whether you're Apple, whether you're Microsoft. And somebody could still be on Windows ninety-five, as an example, homeowner, hopefully not a contractor. But is there, have we tested with multiple different software, like whether it's, like I said, Apple or whatever? Versus Microsoft and one of the last, I'll just ask the other question at the same time. The link is great to say you can get to the link, is, will it actually give you two things that says, you know. A fence permit averages five to seven business days, kind of so people have an expectation. And in that link, can you click on your link to say it's, it's in progress or hasn't been looked at? That way you say people calling, say, hey, I just sent it in yesterday, how long is it going to take? There's some type of link that gives them kind of an idea of what, where it's at in the progress and what to expect. Thanks.
To you, Mr. Chairman. So to your first question, so when, at, when we did the, the beta testing through stakeholders. We provided an online survey and one of the questions of that survey was what did you actually fill the application using? Desktop, a tablet, a phone? Also, what you were using for an operating system, so whether you're using iOS from Mac, Windows, Windows eleven? What browser you were using, if you were using Safari, Windows Explorer, right? Chrome, Google Chrome? So we gathered that information to assist, the reason was, was because we wanted to identify if there were issues. Was it linked to the actual process or was it linked to the hardware that you were using? In terms of getting a status, you will get a notification that your application is, is submitted. At this time, again, as I mentioned, we're building that digital roadmap. So one of the functional requirements we're looking at in the future. Wherever this goes, in terms of whether this application or something else, is that ability to be able to track and go online, to be able to see. It's basically like when you order pizza. It's ordered, it's in the oven, it's going in the box, it's ready at the door. That's one of the functional requirements we're looking at. So once we get this out, those are the types of feedback that we're looking for through this process, rather, you know, building on it. And we're also working with, with Laserfish to Rico Canada to see what other functionality there is that we could basically add to this through that process. So it's on our radar, hopefully to get to it as soon as possible. Yep.
Counsel, Counsel Luck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is fabulous. It's really exciting to see, you know, just the potential of this new process. And, and bringing it kind of into the, you know, twenty twenty-four. So kudos to Mr. Colburn and his department for spearheading this. One of my questions was, when I was going, when you were going through your slides. You did talk about beta testing it and having a survey. And I'm just wondering, when it gets launched and people start using it, is there any continuous improvement built in? So that people that are kind of on the ground using it for the first time have an opportunity to provide additional feedback to continue to improve? I'm sure, no matter, you know, how good the beta testing is, we're always going to find small little glitches that might not work. And I'm just wondering if that's already built into the launch and will people using it have an opportunity to provide continuous feedback? For continuous improvement. Thank you.
So through you, Mr. Chairman. So part of the, part of, part of the things that we're looking at is we were providing a link on our website. As well as on the on, online application page to provide us with feedback, so that will be always active. And then through this process, a couple of things that we're looking at, as we, as we go through this process, we'll be continuing to look at surveys to get feedback. So that's not just for the beta testing, but it's actually to identify, you know, user functionality, what are we missing, what can we improve on, absolutely. But also gathering metrics to look at in the backend, how long it actually takes from an application submission till it gets, till it gets out the door. So this software and this platform allows us to do that. It actually knows when the application comes in, when it goes through each stage and then when the permit's issued. So we'll be looking at it basically, you know, at quarter, half through the year, year end, how many applications we process, what is our turnaround time? And how can we improve on that as well? So the other, the other big thing to that end as well is one of the challenges we have a lot of times is that connecting that payment information. With the actual permit application, so now that system brings it all together. So I think in terms of, we'll be also looking at, you know, how is it working across departments as well? So it's going to be analytics in the backend, gathering as much data as we can. Because we are building a roadmap to providing, basically from our department, a, a digital, completely digital platform. And we want to know that through this process. What, what are benchmarks? What do we need to improve on? And if we're going to get additional software, what are expectations and what functional requirements do they need to meet to make sure we're improving on what we've already started?
Awesome. That sounds great. Thank you.
Counselor Bigger?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to Mr. Colburn and his team for, I just wanted to say, I really commend them on this project. It's, it seems to be, it's very fulsome. Being on the virtual sign-in today, unfortunately, I couldn't see any of the demonstration. Of the link to the portal, but I'll look forward to seeing that at some point. Just really well done and I just think that from conceptual to sort of the, you know, the, the vision for it. The practical mechanics of it and as Counsel Luck had just brought up and Mr. Colburn explained. You know, not just sort of beta testing on the front end, but getting those metrics and that feedback as we go along to continuously improve. And this is just so timely, coming off of these open house sessions last week and our update municipal plan. There's no, it's no coincidence, I'm sure, that this all sort of dovetails together. But as Mr. Colburn points out, I mean, with the efforts to reduce red tape. And needless procedures and delay time as a part of, you know, acting, actioning. Opportunities for grant funding and incentivizing developers in our community. We are very fortunate, of course, as we all know, to have a, an above-average growth rate in the town of Quispam Sis. And in that same regard, that we enjoy that very nice big juicy growth rate. It's not surprising we should be out on sort of the tip of the spear when it comes to technology and looking for ways to incentivize builders and developers. So I just wanted to commend Mr. Colburn and the whole team for a really great, a really great process here. So very well done.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Counselor Donovan?
Thank you. I would like to move that Mr. Colburn be thanked for his presentation on the soon-to-be-launched Quispam Sis Development. And Building Permit Online Application Portal.
Moved by Counselor Donovan, second here. Counselor Thompson, seeing no other hands, please vote. Counselor Luck? Okay, thank you. That's it.
Six zero.
Six zero approved. Thank you, Mr. Colburn, for your presentation. Well done. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public hearings and there is none. Next is minutes of previous meeting, a regular meeting held February sixth twenty-four. Counselor Donovan?
Thank you. I'd move that the minutes be approved as prepared.
Thank you. Counselor Miller seconded the motion. Seeing no other hands or comments, please vote. Counselor Luck, good. Thank you.
Six zero, Mr. Chairman.
Six zero approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. I don't think there's any. Being none. Next is correspondence. Letter from Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, it's more, the, the comments are there so everybody can read them. It's more for discussion for twenty twenty-five. So I'd just like to move to receive and file.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, seconded by Counselor Donovan. Please vote now.
Counselor Olson? And Counselor Luck?
Counselor Luck, thumbs up. Thank you.
Six zero, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Approved unanimously, six zero. Okay, next item is. Is bylaws and one fifty-seven Palmer Brook Road, Parcel A. Rezoning application rolls to light industrial. Counselor Donovan?
Thank you. I would move that council refer the application to rezone. The property identified as Parcel A on the McQuinn Amending Subdivision Plan, Palmer Brook Road with Civic number one fifty-seven. Palmer Brook Road from rural to light industri, or industrial to the Planning Advisory Committee. And notification be issued to property owners within a hundred meter radius of the property proposed for zoning. And that a public hearing date be set for April second, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Miller. Please vote now. Yeah, thank you, Counselor Luck.
And Counselor Olson.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, six zero.
Okay, thank you. Approved unanimously. Item number twelve, new business. Carson Hill Land for Public Purposes subdivision ascent. Staff report. Counselor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd move the council grant ascent to the, to six two nine two four eight NB Limited Subdivision Plan. So the plan can be approved by the development officer for registration in the provincial registration system.
Seconded by Counselor Donovan. Please vote now.
Six zero in favor, your worship.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. This is uh, next item, Country View Estates. Next item is the Country View Estates, Phase Six A, council assent. Counselor Donovan?
Thank you. I'd move that council grant assent to Country View Estates, Phase Six A subdivision, Phase Six Final Plan, subject to an execution of the subdivision development agreement with the or with the town, so that this plan can be approved by the Development Officer for registration in the provincial land registration system.
Second here. Counselor Millers, seconded by Counselor Miller. Please vote now.
Six zero, motion carried, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Motion's carried. Next item is under reports. Counselor Donovan?
Thank you. Uh, receive and file them, please.
Counselor Thompson seconds. All those in favor, uh, please, uh, please vote now. Counselor Luck? Thank you.
Motion carried, six zero, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you. Next is a business arising from me to the hall. No, nothing. Summoned to move adjournment? Counsel, Counselor Thompson? Counselor Thompson, second here. Counselor Miller? Please vote now. Well said.
Yes, uh, six zero, motion carried.
Thank you. Motion's been carried anonymously, six zero. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you.